Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Community visioning update and discussion.
So just kind of give you a brief update. We did get the inserts finalized and they will be, this is a little loud. And they will be in the March, April, and May water bill inserts. And you have a little copy in there of what that will look like. It'll be the one-third page and it will be on green paper, so hopefully it will stand out.
Nice.
A little bit. The website is up and running. If you look at our town website, there's a ribbon at the top and it has a lot of information on it. One of his water resources, but now there's also a community visioning thing there. And you can click on that and it gives some general information about it, as well as having some links to the visioning process, the engagement plan, and then also our implementation plan. So that's the link that's being referenced in the inserts that we're sending to everyone in their water bill, so they'll have a place to go to get the latest and greatest information. We have finalized the scope with Horsey, Witten, to help us with this and working on executing the contract with them at this point. One of the things that I think we need to do and pick up on now is to try and to identify some of the dates in June with which we could have the three workshops. One of the workshops could probably be a regular planning board evening. It might not be in this room, per se, but I believe, here. So June 3rd or June 17th are one of those dates would probably be one of our evening workshop. So I guess I'm trying to find out typically what we've been trying to do when we have the three workshops of the same nature. We try and maybe have something in the morning at like nine o'clock and maybe something in the afternoon at like two o'clock, so that we can kind of pepper into different people's schedules of when they might be able to meet. So right now, I guess I'm kind of looking for anybody who has some dates when they know that they definitely wouldn't be available. You can certainly send it to me individually and we'll try and work something out, because once we try and settle on some dates, we also need to get Nate Kelly on board and his crew. So it's going to be a little tricky to pick some dates and then we got to find the location for them. So if we can find out any do or die dates from you guys as soon as possible, I think that would be helpful to schedule that. Nate did say he was trying to schedule his trip to Spain at the end of June. So I'm thinking maybe the beginning to mid-June should be when we can try and have those three.
Good.
I agree.
I think that's on. There it is. If we could do the first week of June, which is usually slower for everybody on the Cape and Islands, because they get a bump after Memorial Day, in the first week it's usually a little slower. And later in the month, it just picks up speed when the kids come out of school and just everybody gears up for 500,000 people inhabiting Cape Cod spending a million dollars a day. So I think we should use the 17th of June as our regular planning board meeting to have people here, because that's already scheduled. And if we have to, if I have to pull out of work the week of June 1st, I'll do so to meet people at some point, somewhere, to have a meeting.
Sounds like a plan. Any other comments?
No. Sounds like a winner.
Would you like to have like one, like every week? Like the first week of June, second week of June, third week of June? And then just, or do we try? I'm concerned if someone's away one week or something and they can't. If we have all of them like in the first week.
No, we have one in the first week and one in the third week. Isn't two okay? Or we need three?
I think we were hoping to have three to see if we could get enough people.
I'm supposed to have, I'm supposed to enjoy having a full head of hair, too, but that really hasn't kicked in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hear you, buddy.
Yeah, I know. Tell you.
I hear you, buddy.
She's like, shut up, Brad.
If you guys only want to have two, that's certainly up to you guys.
Is the end of May too early to have that first meeting?
Maybe not. Like, maybe not. That's the week of Memorial Day.
We would have a...
Memorial Day is the 25th, but yeah, that is the week of Memorial Day.
We would have a regular meeting on the 20th.
Yeah, the 20th might be a little quick. Are you guys interested in the week of the 25th? Is anybody going to be away? How's that?
No. I'm not going to be away.
No one's going to be away. I know it's going to be harder for the working crew, and I know that Liz probably will have, and Chris will also have, the similar difficulties with something that's during the day.
I've been spending a lot of time off Cape. We get some project going, so...
So you're super busy, too.
But in regards to either two or three meetings, how about we have the first two and see how that goes? And if we feel comfortable, maybe go with two. If not, we'll schedule the third one.
Well, I think we need to schedule it now.
Do you think so?
Because if we're going to advertise, if we're going to advertise it, we're going to get out flyers at town meeting, we're going to start getting all this information out.
But do, you know, I think we should be cautious about going too far out, too. You know? People forget.
Oh, no, no, no. I agree with you totally with regard to when we would like hit with a lot of the publicity should be a lot closer than now.
Yeah.
You know, but what's going in the insert is just kind of just letting you know we're doing something and just kind of keep your heads up.
Within two weeks, usually.
Right. But it takes a while to coordinate the rooms and all of those things. And I think we did want to have something on April 28th for town meeting to kind of let, that would be a great way to send, hand out some information to people who are going there.
I tell you what we did with wastewater. We had one corner of the...
Right.
The front entrance of the school. And we had, I don't know whose iPad it was, but it was set up with the recorder, with a film that was made relative to the wastewater issues. And then there was a lot of text on it as well. So if we had something like that, then any of us that are there can just kind of add on, you know, with dialogue relative to people's interest and show interest, and then some pass outs there as well.
Yeah. I think having like a little, some type of little kiosk with some information and kind of getting people to think, kind of think about it would be, would be good. But no one's going to be away, so it sounds like...
So why don't we just, why don't you ask Horsey, Witten, people if, I mean, just one suggestion, a meeting on the week of the first, week on the meeting of the eighth, and obviously our planning board on the 17th, so that's three in a row. If they can't make three in a row, one of the three, then it's not going to, it's not going to happen.
Oh, I think they will. It's just a matter of trying to schedule it around them. They're pretty open, I think, at this far out with meetings. I just want to make sure like someone wasn't scheduled to go on vacation, you know, and that type of thing. I'll also reach out to Chris and Liz as well and see if they're, and then we'll kind of pick some times from that.
Sure.
Okay. I am working on the data sheets, the background information. I have started working on some of the water resources stuff. I am also scheduled to go, I've been asked to go to the Rotary Club on March 20th and give a little spiel on visioning. I think it's kind of tying in a little bit to, I guess this is like kind of wastewater month. I know that Rich Bianvino is also going to be going to the Rotary Club, I think, the week before. I think visioning does tie into that, because once we have wastewater, how do we vision Yarmouth looking a little bit different with that obstacle taken away?
You know, that's the, that's also the focus of the DIF, because that's hopefully what's going to help be a funding mechanism for that, for that whole development at Skull Island.
Right. I think, I'm sorry, my mic is being very unhappy. I think what the DIF is doing is just basically taking any development that you have within the DIF, the new growth revenue that would be generated by taxes based on that investment, would then go back towards paying the wastewater. Without a DIF, we're still going to get that new, new growth revenue coming to the town. We can just decide whether we move it towards wastewater or we move it to other endeavors.
Well, it's the same mechanism that Rich Bianvino has structured and as part of the financing plan for Phase 1, but that's over the whole length of the Route 28, from border to border. But the DIF is more specifically located, and whether that goes, whether that gets activated or not is up to, up to the group that's pursuing that. But each, each of them are going to mean a change of what the vision is for along 28.
Yeah, it's going to be a moving target.
It will be, but those are a couple of very specific things that we are, we already know are potential changes.
I don't think Rich's recovery plan even touches on new growth. I think he's been able to try and identify other revenue sources that really hasn't take, it's kind of more of a in-your-back-pocket, and oh, yeah, by the way, we're also going to have this new growth revenue generated.
Yeah. He's deliberately structured it without considering growth, per se.
Right.
But he's recognizing that it might also contribute later on.
Right. Plus the money-saving, if we can combine it with a Route 28 resurfacing project, you know, and get the sewer mains installed that way, obviously that will save us some money. I don't think he's incorporating that. So there's a lot of other money-saving endeavors out there.
There's so, so many parts.
Yeah. And they did, and I'm sure we'll talk about it later, but the DHY, they did, had a great presentation from the people from the state revolving loan fund, very encouraging with regard to 0% loans and maybe even some, some debt forgiveness. So things are looking very promising, I think.
The state looks very favorable in regards to a regional approach, and I think that's where we're going to really be at the top of the list.
Yep. So that's kind of what I had on, on the update for the visioning.
Okay.
Kathy, were you trying to get like three of these visioning meetings in one week? Or were you...
No, 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 no. I was trying to pepper them out at different times, in different days, so that, to maximize people's ability to participate. You know, someone might only be able to do it in the evening, or somebody might have their mornings free or their afternoons. We did that with the Route 6A public meetings that we had, and they were pretty widely, evenly attended. And some people attended all three. I think we might want to encourage people not to do that, so that you get different voices. But then we will also have the online survey, which will allow people who can't make those meetings to participate via an online survey. So it'll be interesting to see what kind of participation we get and whether we need to do something more, having, like we had talked about having different, maybe little roundtable discussions with people. Maybe that might be something that we could do with certain groups if we feel like we're not really getting a diverse demographic, or we feel like certain people haven't, their voices haven't really been heard.
It is difficult to get people to attend.
It is.
When we were going, you know, just looking at these minutes, and in regards to 2012, we were dealing with a lot of issues that were important to a lot of people, but, and we had, you know, countless meetings between the planning board and the ad hoc committee as well. And sometimes it was just difficult to get opinions that would come forward and that would help us in what we're trying to approve.
Mr. Chairman, did, in reading those, those past minutes, is that the time when the VCOD was, was the issue, was the, the background and the discussions about the VCOD?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. One of the areas that I saw that was mentioned in one of the, in one of the minutes had to do with the Four Corners area and why that wasn't included in, in part of the VCOD type of designation. Because now with the, with the banner policy that's, that's been, been approved by, by the selectmen, that's going to be a major focus area. And that, that could have been VCOD number five or something like that. And so in other words, in 2012, that, that was part of the VCOD discussion?
Not that I, not that I know.
I think somebody mentioned it as to why that wasn't included in somehow, and I think there was a discussion of that whole south, you remember, South Yarmouth Village. I think there had been some type of zoning initiative prior to that, and it kind of got shot down.
It did.
Got burned out.
Got, okay, burned down.
Get shot down.
So I think they were just, someone mentioned it, but that kind of was the response.
Well, the general consensus of opinion is that what we were able to bring forward was with the four villages. And if you recall, well, you wouldn't recall, you guys weren't on board.
We weren't here. That's why, that's why...
Brad was here. It was Ken Driscoll that actually mentioned the fact, let's go beyond Parker's River Bridge. And that's how the discussion all started, remember, Brad? And then we just kept going. We ended up to Winslow Gray Road, which is the beginning of the...
VCOD 1.
Yeah. VCOD 1. But, yeah, it was, and look at what's transpired since then and what we've had, you know, even if we had looked further down towards the bridge, it just, it's obvious that we're looking at redevelopment in the centralized area of that five-mile stretch of 28. And when you get to Lou Nickenell's property, I think he has the largest parcel on 28. So, yeah. But it, hopefully, at some point, this, it's going to happen with the sewers coming.
Yeah. Speaking of VCOD 1, Kathy, do you have an update on the, on the Great Island development there?
Yeah, I haven't received anything formally. They're still looking at different options of what they will be proposing there.
I was, I was here with the early voting last week, and I had a couple of questions about that, that whole facade of all of the shops there. And so there's interest that people really want to see something done.
Yes. Well, I think with the zoning change that we did in the fall kind of piqued people's interest in seeing something done there, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a quick question. On the, one quick question.
Sure.
Some feedback from other committees I'm on and other town things that people know about this visioning process. The question has been raised to me about how we will incorporate other town committees. They just came from CEDC. And they want to be, you know, part of those stakeholder roundtables.
Sure.
The library planning committee wants to be part of a stakeholder planning roundtable. Those two committees in particular have approached me directly to say, we want to make sure you don't forget us and we want to, we want to get our voices heard. How do we do that? And I said, well, that would be through either individual participation in the community workshops or these other stakeholder groups that we intend to do some outreach with. But there are a couple of committees who specifically want to participate directly.
Yep. I think if there's some, if there's some committees that specifically have asked and want to have a little, that, that's one thing. But I think part of the initial push is really going to be to try to get people to provide their feedback, not with us all individually going to them and pulling it out of people, but, you know, here's the workshop, here's the online surveys, try and participate through that venue. But like I say, if for some reason we don't get a lot of participation, then maybe we want to have some individual. But I mean, to go to every single group would be an impossibility.
Horsey and Witten had a, had a good idea when they mentioned the fact that let the people bring the ideas to us, as opposed to us discussing it and then bringing it to them.
Right, right. Not having the, the planning board's ideas before the workshops.
Exactly.
That was a good point.
So the idea would be in terms of just getting back to, as example, the library planning board, planning committee, different than the library board. To suggest to them that they, they get involved through the community workshops as either a group or as individuals?
Yeah.
I think if you're a group, it becomes, you're having a public meeting and you have to post it, and that becomes much more difficult. I think if you, if you wanted to get together and do, do the survey together, in a sense, and provide a letter or something like that as a committee, that's certainly fine.
All right.
But it's, you know, it's, it can be individual. Because then every committee would need to meet and, you know, they quorum and...
I understand. The whole public meeting law comes into play there.
Yes.
I, I understand that.
But the intention is, and we always send it out to all the town staff to kind of relay to people, but also so that they're aware of it, but then we send it to the committees, you know, CEDC, you know, zoning, everybody gets, because those are the people who, they're volunteering for town already, so they're involved.
During the pipeline.
They care about the, they care about the community because they volunteered already. So they're the types of people who typically do show up for workshops and/or participating in online surveys. But certainly if somebody specifically says, we'd really like you to come individually, we can do a little bit of that, but I don't know how extensively we'll be able to do it with every, I mean, certainly can't do it with every committee and every group.
Oh, no.
It just makes me want to cry, just thinking about it.
It just...
Kathy, one item, one question about the, the handout. I thought we were going to see color on this.
It's green.
It's going to be in green.
Yeah. I don't know whether I brought, yeah, they, they sent it to me. It's on green paper. So they, basically, it would just be this, you know, cut in the third, in green paper, and that's what's going to be in your water bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the color will help make it stand out more. I agree. Because I did get something in my water bill recently about, and this is, this is the problem, about the stickers and everything, but it was a tri-fold, and it was like, what's this? And it was small print, and I'm like, you know? So that's where you tried to be catchy with the color and a nice logo.
Print to get smaller and smaller and smaller.
Right. And keeping the print fairly large and the information fairly limited, so that people will actually read it. So we'll see if we're successful. It's a good college try. We'll see how it goes.
Yeah, there you go. Fundraising special, event sign policy?
Yeah. Now that the zoning has passed, we really need to get this approved through the Board of Selectmen. They had already seen it and essentially were in support of it because they, they recommended the zoning amendments. But in the meantime, Mark took another look at it, and what you see highlighted in yellow here is some of the things, some of the language that he added. I think it's all very good language. It's a little bit more clarifying language. And if it's all fine with you guys, then I'll slap a cover letter on this and we'll send it to the Board of Selectmen for their approval. The red line version is attached. Anything in yellow is new language. Any, any of the other red is stuff that you've seen already.
Just one, one comment, just for verbiage, just for, the setback for all signs is six feet from the property line, except when the building commissioner states the site distance is obstructed versus, in the opinion of the building commissioner. I just, but that's, it's a minor thing.
So what did you, I'm sorry, I didn't...
I was just thinking of just making this sentence a little more user-friendly. The setback for all signs is six feet from the property line, except when the building commissioner states the site distance is obstructed. I didn't want to put feels, so I just put states. Or rules, it's up to you. It just, instead of in the opinion of the building commissioner, that's all.
Oh, okay. And the building commissioner determines site distance is obstructed?
Yeah. Determines is fine.
Sure.
Again, he has that on the first page, item three, opinion of the building commissioner.
All right, that's why I just read.
So the setback for all signs is six feet from the property line, except when the building commissioner determines the site distance is obstructed.
There you go. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Cleaner.
Yep.
And we don't have to approve this to bring it to town meeting. They're just going to, they've already approved it, and it's, the selectmen, you can put it in their own packet and that's it.
I don't, they'll, I don't know whether they'll do it through a consent agenda or whether they'll want a presentation. I'm going to put, slap a memo on it and ask them to approve it as a consent agenda item, and we'll see what happens.
We've already done it.
They've seen it before, and it's nothing new. But the problem is, if you do that and they have a comment, then you have to go on another meeting.
Good.
So we're good with that?
The chairman does. There we go.
Yeah. That's fine.
Do you need a vote on this, Kathy?
No. I think if you guys are fine, I can just say that the planning board is...
Has agreed.
Has agreed, yes. On behalf of the planning board, I'm submitting this. Yeah.
Good. Board of Appeals, meaning that minutes, throwback minutes.
We've got to deal with the throwback time, right?
I think the way we've done this before, if we don't have all the right people there, we just do it by necessity, so then everyone can vote.
Okay.
So the motions would be, and I think maybe you could just do it for all of the 2012, which is the January 18th, the 25th, February 1st, February 8th. God, you guys met a lot. February 22nd, February 27th, May 2nd, May 30th, and June 13th.
Yeah, we, we earned our pay back then, I have to admit.
Of 2012.
Almost got divorced a few times. It's, you go on where?
Yeah, that must have been...
So what do we do? Just make a motion?
Make, make a motion to approve, out of necessity, the meeting minutes of those dates I mentioned.
There's only one comment I have. I think we're missing, hold on, I apologize.
Nope.
Minutes of February 27th, the German, don't we have to put a time in there?
These were done to the best of our ability with the notes that were available at the time.
Yeah.
So unless you recall when you returned, my friend, I don't know.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to accept the minutes of January 16th, 25th.
18th.
18th, 25th, February 1st, February 8th, February 22nd, February 27th, 2012, and May 2nd, 2012, and May 30th, 2012.
And?
There's one more?
One more.
And June 13th, 2012, out of necessity.
Third second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Wow.
You're on a roll, Brad.
Jeez.
Now we actually have current minutes, too.
Man, that's a lot of work. I make a motion, accept the minutes of 2:5, 2020.
Second?
Second here.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome.
Okay.
Wow, wow, wow.
What's that, Kathy?
I'm set with the minutes, yeah.
Board of Appeals, agenda decisions. We've seen some of those come through, decisions. Any updates, board members?
The Housing Committee is right, at the, at the same time as our meeting, is having the auction for buy downs for, for new housing. That auction is being held at the Senior Center.
Tonight?
Tonight, yeah. It was scheduled the same time. Mary couldn't be there, and Mary had originally asked me to, to be there, but I had to be here, so couldn't be in two places at the same time. But another member of the committee is, is there to answer other questions as well. It was, it was announced in the, in the newspaper, and it was also announced on, on local media.
Yeah, I think I forwarded something that Mary had sent to me on that.
Capital Budget Committee, we presented to the Board of Selectmen last Tuesday our, our plan, with a couple of very minor adjustments. The actual public hearing on the budget isn't until next month. It was supposed to be last week, but the charter and various other regulations required that the school committee budget, the regional school budget be part of it, and it wasn't ready. So we will have a final budget meeting in March where we will present again the capital budget. There were no significant questions with regard to the plan as, as presented. The second committee that presented last week was on the banners, the CEDC. We were successful in having the board approve the banner project at two locations, Bass River, Four Corners, and down 28 near the Chamber of Commerce. There'll be a total of 10 banners. And some of the Board of Selectmen have very good memories. Selectmen Tully, in fact, remembered the discussion we had prior to town meeting when these were approved, when we were sponsoring these, about First Amendment and revisiting why, why it couldn't be private and how come we couldn't sell the space and, you know, he recalled this, this discussion with the, when the town council got involved and said, it becomes a First Amendment issue. And so that's why we are the applicant for the banners. CEDC was the actual applicant, and our liaison is the chamber. But he had, had a pretty good memory on, on that one, so. But it went with, it was approved, as was the policy. So we had two things that were successful there.
Great.
Water Resources Committee met again just the other night, and I guess we're proceeding along. They had a tri-town meeting last week, and they're hoping to get all, all three towns at the town meeting approved the DHY agreement. They're still doing some tweaking, and there's some language going in there relative to developing or requiring an MOU, memorandum of understanding between the towns for any work that's done on town properties, such as the Bass River recharge area, and so that's one item. The Water Resources Committee is going to have additional marketing, we're going to have two townwide mailings, they're going to be spread apart late March and early April, and we're also going to have one more outreach meeting at the Cultural Center, and it's going to be sometime in April, I think.
I think this, we're hoping to be the 15th, which might be a little difficult with the planning board.
Right. And then, that hasn't been finalized yet.
Right.
And one item for the planning board is the, the fact that we still need to develop the land use controls, and you have a couple years to have it in place by 2022. That's important because it's one of the elements needed in order for us to qualify for SRF.
Zero.
That's the funding from the state for zero interest, or?
Zero, yeah, zero percent. You'd have to be flow neutral, so you have to have measures in place so that you won't be developing beyond your build-out amount. I don't know how much the planning board would be involved, other than if you want to be modifying some of the zoning in some of the areas. I think some of the land use regulations that are in place elsewhere aren't necessarily just zoning, there's some, there are separate bylaw regulation that needs to be looked at. I had a bunch of, I have a bunch of questions about how, how the X amount of allocation that we have for build-out would get allocated, is it first come, first served? Who's the person, what entity is actually governing and giving the allocations, and who's monitoring to make sure where we are on our allocations, to, to make sure that, you know, we don't want to be having a certain number of projects, and then we have a great project at the end, and we don't have the ability to connect them. So there's a lot of, of questions like that, and fully comfortable that we will figure all of that out. It's been figured out a million places before, and it will be figured out in the, in the town of Yarmouth as well. But I was hoping to maybe meet with CDM and talk about that a little bit more, just so we have some answers, just for some questions at town meetings, so that people aren't concerned about that.
Kathy? I think one of the most important things, though, Kathy, and maybe, maybe the planning board could consider supporting the Water Resources Committee in this endeavor. When, when this issue comes up at town meeting in late April, there may be public showing up, asking questions about, you know, the possibility of expansion and out-of-control development, and that kind of thing.
Right.
We need to be able to address that at the town meeting, to explain how there are going to be these land use controls in place.
Right.
So that sewers really are not going to affect the development of the town. The development of the town is really controlled by the planning board and zoning board appeals. And I, and we have regulations in place that do that already.
We do, but we.
I'm not sure you want to go down that road. Well, I don't want to go down that road, but I mean, if, if somebody shows up and starts to make a point about why they don't want to have sewers because they're concerned about uncontrolled development, I think we need to make a point that it's going to be controlled.
I think it's going to be controlled based on the fact that we have a maximum build-out.
Right.
There's only so much build-out that you can do, and we have a lot of opportunities out there for people right now. Not every person, even with sewers, is going to take advantage of that opportunity.
Right.
I mean, if you maxed out and said, "Everyone is going to do the maximum that they want to do based on zoning," it would be an unaffordable buy-in to a wastewater treatment facility, probably one and a half million gallons per day, but people aren't going to do that. What was done in the build-out is we took a look at our high-density areas, like the HMOD-1, the HMOD-2, the VCODs, and looked at them parcel by parcel with some very specific criteria. Larger parcels are developers who have shown interest, got a higher flow, estimated for them. That doesn't mean that that's, anything's been allocated to anybody's property, and that's why I was talking about questions about, how is the allocation made? Is it first come, first served? Do you want to hold back a certain amount? How does that, all those mechanisms get put into place? But there's only going to be so much development with the 0% loan, because you've set yourself in with that build-out amount.
Right. In that build-out analysis that you were part of, have you cataloged the specific areas that you had come up with the numbers for?
Yes, we, we were given a spreadsheet of all the different phases, along with the water data for the last, like, from 2012 to 2017, because that's how they estimated what's our current, what would be our current wastewater flow, is the average of the, the water rate, or the water flows to different properties, 90% of that is considered to be wastewater. So even before we've done anything, we have an X amount that was calculated, and then we went into individual properties, where in those specific high-zone areas, where we have higher densities and, and more opportunities for people, and took a look at what could be done on some of those properties, knowing that, oh, maybe somebody might want to add, you know, another 50 seats to their restaurant, if they had the opportunity, because they're very successful, or maybe somebody, if they had the opportunity, they might add some more hotel rooms, or, or maybe they might do a little mixed use. So we kind of went through and tried to identify those the best we could, with the best available information that we have. It's a crystal ball. I do know CDM said that we had done the most detailed analysis of all the communities. I think other communities had, had estimated a certain amount of allocation. That had been done previously, back in 2011, where it was they added the MEP estimate, and then like a random 300,000 gallon per day allocation, allowance, they called it an allowance. I think now we've actually got that up to like 576,000 gallons per day as an allowance for development, and the vast majority of it being in Phase 1.
My concern, it's not so much a concern, it's, it's just a question. DEP sets a limit for each of the communities here on the Cape, and in fact, in the Commonwealth, is how much water they can withdraw from the ground, and it may, that may come up on, as a hard limit for what ultimate build-out may, may be desired, or may be allowed. So I'm just, just tossing that out as, as something to at least keep on the horizon, because it, it, it may be a very serious restriction down the road. I don't know that it would be, or I have no information that it, that it would be, but it's, it's a potential at the state level. Now, they, they would probably want to cooperate and encourage the town to do what it can, but it is, it is a hard limit that, that is currently imposed. Even though we have 24 wells.
Right.
In the town, we can't use them all at the same time.
Right.
Or, or the amount that is withdrawn is, is the, the number that we're restricted to.
Right.
We did share the information from the build-out with the Water Department's consultant, Kleinfelder, they were doing some type of analysis and looking at what, what the future needs might be for, for the water. But you're right, that's a limiting resource.
It doesn't mean that the regulations at DEP can't be, can be modified or, or relaxed or whatever, but it's just something to be, keep on the horizon.
I would also point out that one of the things that was talked about at the tri-town was the peer review that was done for the cost. They did a peer review on, Weston and Sampson did a peer review of CDM's work with regard to the cost estimating for go-it-alone versus DHY, and also on the agreement. I think the tweaks that you were talking about, they had a few tweaks of some things that they wanted to see added, more of like an appendix situation to the agreement, but they based, and they had some very minor comments, or kind of saying, "Well, you could do it this way," but what, what was done was basically fairly solid. They felt that it was good for planning purposes, and it clearly showed the differential between the Towne Yarmouth going alone and, and DHY, and that it's a savings, it's a significant savings to all three communities to group together and, and do it alone.
The last thing that we're hoping is the Board of Selectmen at their meeting in March, March 16th, we're hoping that they, they will come out and support the DHY program, but so far they haven't made any commitment.
I believe the 16th is an odd Monday night meeting, just for people in the, out there, to realize that, I guess, they didn't want to.
Stay back.
It is, it is a national holiday in the Towne Yarmouth.
Thanks, Lee. Correspondents?
Just all the different stuff that I've been sending you, and.
Staff updates?
I just wanted to update, update you guys on, although we talked very briefly, that we had been working with the Cape Cod Commission for a bike connectivity study, to take a look at connecting the Cape Cod rail trail by Bayberry through the big swath of town-owned land down to the drive-in site. That was something that was identified in that Uli-Tapp planning study that was done back in 2017. We had a lot, we had a couple, they basically identified different alternatives and different ways to, to get there, and also identified a bunch of different constraints and opportunities, had a couple of public meetings, had a fairly well-responded-to survey. We also got a significant number of emails and telephone calls from people with some concerns about it. But I'm hoping to get up on the town website tomorrow, the final report that was done for them, that kind of summarizes all of that, and also identifies some recommendations. And basically, because of the different, the opposition and the concerns, and the constraints associated, you know, with the bog service roads, the wetlands, the fact that this is, you know, well-kept protection land, that might have some protections on it, that we can't put a paved bike path through, and that, you know, once you get down to Route 28, you're going to be closer to needing some, some type of easements across private property. There's a bunch of things that were identified in the report, so the recommendation was not to really pursue having a formalized bike path through, through that area. But they did make some other recommendations with regard to evaluate maybe participating in the complete streets programs, that's where, where you're trying to add different multi-modes of transportation on your streets, when you're doing improvements to your projects, whether it's bike lanes or sidewalks and that type of thing, and also consider establishing some type of bicycle or pedestrian committee that could kind of prioritize some of these Right now, I think the staff workloads wouldn't allow a new committee to be established right now, but it's certainly something that could be discussed in the future. One of the things that came out of the, the study is the possible, or the survey, was we had asked some questions about how would you be interested in having some type of shared-use pathway along roadways, and there was some interest expressed on that, specifically on the Forest Road, having a better connection to the rail trail, having a connection to Route 28 from that. We're also working on, right now, the final design for the Higgins-Croll shared-use pathway, which would go from Buck Island Road all the way up to the Rotary Roundabout, excuse me, not the Rotary, Roundabout on Higgins-Croll, to connect in with the Cape Cod rail trail there, that would provide a really nice connection between a lot of different recreational areas, especially Sandy Pond, and also the schools and residential areas, so, so that is being actively worked on, and they recommended continuing to go forward with that, and looking at different grant opportunities, and then also trying to advocate for Mass DOT to provide better bicycle accessibility along Route 28. It's very dangerous to ride on Route 28, including the possibility of maybe looking at a shared-use pathway on the south side. The Bass River Bridge, as well as the Four Corners, has incorporated a shared-use pathway on the south side there, with the idea of maybe being able to continue that.
Is the 28 resurfacing going to include that in this go-around?
I don't know. We had the road safety audit, it was mentioned numerous times as something that would be a significant pedestrian and bicycle improvement. There's been some discussions with, ooh, excuse me, with personnel from Mass DOT on that, but whether it gets incorporated in, I, I can't say right now.
Well, the Mass DOT work on 28 is going to also include the piping for the Phase 1 sewer, and you would think that with that kind of extensive, extensive work being done, and there's also a water line that has, that apparently has to be either reinforced or, or replaced on a portion of 28. Jeff has mentioned that a couple times. And if the, if the extent of the work is going to have no change in curbing and side treatments, the idea of a bike path doesn't, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, unless the, the right-of-way is, is totally improved for, for, for the highway, I would think.
It would have to be a project that gets expanded beyond just a resurfacing project. It would be more than a resurfacing project anyway, because they would, whenever they come in and do that, they have to take a look at the handicap accessibility. If anyone's tried to walk down Route 28, you know that there's no handicap ramps in a lot of places, there's utility poles, and lots of traffic signals and control boxes, literally right in the, in the middle of it. So I think they're going to be looking at that, but I haven't heard anything more after, they did complete the road safety audit, and it's finalized, but I don't know where they're going beyond that. But you're right, it would have to be more.
Will the state take, take the advantage of having the roadway layout, the additional feet, relative to their plan, and possibly our sewer plan as well?
Typically, in a resurfacing project, they don't like to do takings.
Yeah.
So it would have to be something, and you couldn't do it within the existing right-of-way, so it would have to be something that was.
Supposedly, there's no utilities in that roadway layout, right?
Oh, I'm sure there's tons of utilities in the roadway layout. I mean, I think there's buried fiber, Verizon is buried along Route 28.
Within the roadway layout.
Within the roadway layout, the water main.
Not the physical road, but the adjacent land.
Oh, oh, I don't, oh, I see what you're saying. No, I think most of those are in, are actually in the travel lane, I think the water is on the north side, but I'm sure it probably does a little bit of, of that, but you're talking about, like, there's really nothing outside the right-of-way that hasn't already got something on it, the sidewalk, or, or a buried utility, or that type of thing, so yeah. Where the sewer goes is, will be interesting, and how that gets repaired, yeah. It's, it's an interesting project.
Yeah, I would think. Okay. Upcoming meetings, March 18th and April 1st?
March 18th, we might have a, a VCOD site plan review for the Irish Village.
Okay.
We had site plan review team and design review committee yesterday, and they were going to be making some modifications, and then coming before the planning board for VCOD site plan review. The particular use would also require a special permit from the planning board for the use, and they may also require some relief from the zoning board of appeals.
Most adjourned?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Thank you, Kathy, as usual.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.